Ladies and gentlemen, council order, all rise.
Please be seated. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council standing or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489 extension 2425. The council will break for dinner around 6:30 PM as required. Firstly, I will turn your attention to a very special, special presentation we have today from a group Up With Voices. Now, this is such a special treat. A group of singers from community living London, working through the Boys and Girls Club under the direction of the man himself, Mario Serselli, are going to be singing our National Anthem. I will ask you to please stand and help me welcome Up With Voices. One, two, three, four. Phil Choir, I have heard councillor Steve Layman sing. You were so much better. So we have a, as is our custom, we would like to present to you Up With Voices to pepper today particularly. I'm just going to show this all to all of you. Up with the sincerest thanks to the council, our staff, and our gallery. Can I ask the two of you to hold this? Mario, we're going to get you at one end and we'll go on. Can I go on this end and we'll do a picture together? Very nice. Well, it's nice to meet you. Mario. Come hidey over here. Wave it, nurse, she'll be there. Prophete Mario, I hope. So ladies and gentlemen, as we say thank you Up With Voices, we're asking this. Ladies and gentlemen, Up With Voices. So colleagues, I'll ask for any disclosures of pecuniary interest. Councillor Hallmer.
On item 8.1.11, so 8111, it's on the CAPS agenda, short-term accommodations. I have rented my home in the past on Airbnb and I have a reasonable expectation I might do that again if I'm away. And so I have a pecuniary interest on that issue of regulating short-term accommodations.
That's through the deputy mayor. Thank you. Any other councillor, Van Mirberg?
Thank you, Mayor. The 19th report of Strategic and Priorities Committee Number Three, as I have two children who are full-time students at Fancha.
So noted, thank you. Any other declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to recognitions. And colleagues, we have four recognitions I would like to bring forward. The first is actually to recognize the conductor today of our group Up With Voices. And I thought, again, Up With Voices, you were like amazing and a great job. So for just a moment, let me just share a comment about Mario Serselli. Because the London music scene has been thriving like never before, and he is one of the major reasons why. He sets the bar for what a true music supporter should be. He believes in the immense talent of homegrown London musicians, which is why the not-for-profit Four City London Music Awards exists. These awards have done an incredible job of ensuring London's best are celebrated, encouraged, and recognized for their hard work. It preserves the incredible talent of the past, celebrates the music makers of today, and encourages a new generation of musicians to explore, play, and create right here in London, Ontario. Mario Serselli volunteers tirelessly to support the music community any way he can. As a result of his leadership, we have a London Music Hall of Fame, created to preserve our community's incredible music history. He was a driving force behind the Ken Palmer bursary, which annually gives out up to $2,000 to area high school students studying music in their post-secondary education. These are but a few examples of Mario's dedication and passion for London's music industry. He's well-liked. In fact, I call him Super Mario because he's really well-liked. And more importantly, he's highly respected. London is a more vibrant, more exciting community as a result of his efforts, which is why we recognize today Mario Serselli, ladies and gentlemen. Now I would like to call upon councillor Josh Morgan, councillor Morgan, for a recognition acknowledgement. Councillor Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. On September 28th, there was a fire in a family home in the Hyde Park neighbourhood. The fire service responded. It was the same day that there was the fake homecoming activities. But despite that, multiple emergency services personnel responded to address the fire on Queensborough Crescent. Certainly, I am members of the community appreciate their service and bravery in the face of these circumstances. I know even a small fire prevents significant risk and danger. And so we are grateful for those who put their own wellbeing at risk to aid others every day. Although a fire of this size may not be overly uncommon in a city of London's size, there was certainly something else extraordinary that happened during that event. First, it's important to recognize that a family of nine, seven kids, two adults, and I guess a few more family members, three cats, and a rabbit named Oreo, they lost the contents of their home after a fire started in the basement and smoke filled the house. Five children were at home at the time of the fire. The oldest, being a grade 10 student named May Jacobs, was caring for her younger siblings at the time. As the smoke filled the house, she did not panic. Instead, she acted bravely, saving each and every one of her siblings. The mayor and I just heard May's story in a little presentation that we did in the mayor's office before this. And I have to tell you, even talking with May, she described herself as someone who froze in these sorts of situations in the past. But in this instance, she did not. I should point her out, she's very shy, but she's on the end up in the gallery here and her family's beside her. What she did was she carried her youngest sibling out. She realized the danger and she basically encouraged every other one of her siblings to leave the house because it was dangerous. And only a few moments later, the house was almost completely filled with smoke, which has basically written off all of the contents of their home. So I think it's really important, given that we just had Fire Prevention and Fire Safety Week, of recognizing these sorts of acts of bravery when they happen. It may not be, you know, something that we don't expect for people who have proper training, but when it happens, it's truly inspirational. And May, you know, I don't usually get nervous being a city councillor, but I'm very nervous giving this recognition to you because what you have done is so far beyond what many of us will have the opportunity to do, to save someone that you love from danger. Truly something that deserves to be recognized. So you'll be able to carry that with you for the rest of your life. And I hope that it's both something that's a strength for you as well as an inspiration for others. Something else very great happened that day. And much like the Old East Community rallied when there was a tragedy in their neighbourhood, our community rallied too. The BIA, Giant Tiger, and Redecore all quickly, same day, helped the family who basically left their house, some without shoes. And as they sorted out their insurance, really didn't have much. Those community members came out, helped out, and had them have new articles of clothing and shoes by the end of that first day. Gateway Church reached out and helped them with a vet bill. Unfortunately, one of the pets didn't survive. The other was significantly injured. And they raised some money as well. I spoke with Pastor Patrick Boyes and they said they've still got a little more that they've raised for the family as well. I'd thank former Deputy Mayor Paul Hubert too for helping move with that connection in the community. Also, there are many community members in the neighbourhood, members like David Winter, who many councillors know because he emails us a lot. And he really stepped up and helped the family as well and coordinated a lot of the efforts between the BIA and myself and other members of the community. So I just wanted to recognize that. It's something that doesn't happen very often, but there are some unique circumstances. And I appreciate that the family was able to come today and listen to the recognition. And May, again, you're an inspiration to me and I hope many others. And I appreciate also that our senior admin of the fire service was here today and participated in the ceremony as well. So thank you very much and congratulations on being an inspiration, May.
May, please stand. Please stand.
As I said, she's very shy. So I'm sure that was not the best, the easiest thing to do. But thank you again.
A little shy and a councillor in waiting, I think. Councillor Sean Lewis, you have a recognition as well.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I appreciate this opportunity to rise and draw colleagues' attention. That October 20th to 26th is National Foster Family Week. And I want to take this opportunity ahead of the beginning of this week to thank the hundreds of foster families in all the shapes and sizes that help the children in this community who, for one reason or another, are not with their biological families. These families open their hearts and homes and make a commitment that is quite incredible, frankly. And it's not just the moms or dads, but there's often siblings part of these foster families who are welcoming a new brother or sister into their home, making them feel welcome at a time that can often be very difficult. They may be with us a short time, they may be with us a long time. But those foster children leave a mark on those foster parents. I can say that as somebody who is a duly-approved foster parent. But I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of those volunteers for the incredible work they do, opening their hearts and homes to the children who need it.
Thank you very much, councillor. The final recognition is one with another group that is in the crowd today. And I'm referring to a group of adult English second language students from the program at Bantin Secondary School who are in attendance today. So they're on a field trip today, colleagues, to City Hall, learning about how municipal government works. And they've had a tour. I see John and, well, I see the greatest tour guides like on the planet here who are working with them and showing them part of municipal government. We also have teacher Sandy Cavaco, who's with us as well, which Sandy, we appreciate you being here as well. But you know what, to the attendees today, can I say thanks for choosing to be here this afternoon? Choosing London as your home. We hope you love and enjoy and explore the city. Take the very best that our city has to offer. Can I ask you all to stand who are here as part of the Adult English Second Language Students Program and allow us to recognize you as well? Welcome to London. Now, as I would, you're welcome to sit. As I would say, you're not required to stay through all of this, but any part of it you're certainly welcome to. I say this to all of the gallery as we address them. I would look for number three on our agenda, the review of any confidential matters to be considered in public. I am not made aware of any. So we will now put, move councillor to closed session. I'll look for a motion to go into closed session. Councillor Van Mirberg and seconded by councillor Kayabaga. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed 14 to zero.
Colleagues, let's adjourn to committee room three.
...
...
Please be seated. Colleagues, as we resume our public session, I'll turn your attention to item five and look for a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of October 1st. Councilor Van Mirberg is seconded by Councilor Saleh. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed fourteen to zero.
Under communications and petitions, note there's one communication on the agenda, and as you look at your agenda, it's a referral to Community and Protective Services Committee stage for consideration regarding item nine three point one. And we have a communication from E. Clapp of Graden Street, and it was requested for input regarding the proposed name of the community center on Wavell. I'll look for a mover to deal with that at the appropriate point on the agenda. Deputy Mayor Helmer is seconded by Councilor Lewis. Any comments? I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Councilor Helmer? Closing the vote, the motion's passed fourteen to zero.
Thank you. There are no motions to which notice is given, so colleagues, I'll turn your attention to our reports. And the eleventh report of the committee, Community and Protective Services Committee, Councilor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll put the report on the floor. I've been advised to pull item eleven, which is four point two on the committee agenda, because there's a conflict. And Councilor Squire has indicated that he would like to speak to item six, which is two point five from the committee report.
And I'm sure he'll speak well. Any other issues that colleagues wish to have dealt with separately?
Councilor Lewis indicates he'd like to speak to something but not pulling, so I'm not aware of anybody else wanting to pull other than item number eleven. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out, because I know some people are going to speak on other items, I just wanted to point out the core area informed response and resting spaces update. We had a brief presentation, verbal presentation from staff on that, and there were a number of items on the agenda that month that if people didn't have the opportunity to watch the livestream or the video afterwards, there were some really important items, and the core area informed response is one that immediately springs to mind, and staff are seeing some good results from that.
Thank you. Are you moving the report with the exception of eleven?
Yes, sir.
Comments, questions on any of the items? I believe, Councilor Squire?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And through you, I just wanted to speak to the bus passes, and I know this is something that's going to come back as a budget case, but I think it's really a good news story. And one of the things we saw, being an LTC commissioner, we had a report come to us in June talking about ridership and ridership growth. And quite simply, the increased ridership due to these passes has been about almost six hundred thousand rides. And even if you net out the rides that would have been increased anyways, we're looking at an increase in ridership of almost five hundred thousand a year, which I think goes to the point that this is doing the thing that we want it to do, which is to increase transit ridership. And in that way, and in that measurement, despite the cost, I would argue that this is a bargain for that kind of ridership. And I also want to say that these ridership passes are building blocks, and they're building blocks for future ridership. If we know anything about ridership, we know that if people start riding transit when they are young, they will continue and are more likely to ride transit when they're older. Therefore, the success of the under twelve and youth bus pass are vitally important to sustaining transit over the future. We also know that the youth bus pass through the LTC's ridership plan is going to be a building block to getting students, particularly secondary school students in the City of London, on buses using passes and avoid, in the future, that complete duplication of having yellow school buses and our buses on the same street sometimes at the same time. So I'm really, this, I think, is one of the best things that the previous council did. I think it's important, and I think I'm really enthusiastic to see the ridership numbers that we've been able to create through that.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. And although I'm rising to speak on item nine, I would echo what Councilor Squire just said. From my own experience, particularly with youth involved in sports, there's been a huge uptake in the youth pass, and certainly it helps those with younger siblings, too, to have children under twelve riding free. So I echo Councilor Squire's comments on that front. With regard to item nine three point one, the input on the community center name, I wanted to rise and just share with colleagues how this has arrived here today. Over the last month, month and a half, I've done community engagement with residents online, in person at a town hall meeting, at numerous community events in and around the ward. Total engagements that I have record of is four hundred and eighty-seven. I'm sure there were other quick phone calls and conversations in rinks and such that I didn't jot down at the time, but it's been a remarkable community conversation. East Lyons Community Center is the name that the community has settled on, that they want for this facility. And I want colleagues to understand why. It was in nineteen fifty-one that the East London Lyons were officially chartered as a club. And the very first thing those local residents and business leaders did when they came together as a service club was purchase the block of land that today is known as East Lyons Park. They held work parties to clear the land. They continued to fundraise, and after putting in a playground and a baseball diamond with a backstop, in their initial plan, in nineteen fifty-three, they added the first swimming pool to the site. They continued their work, and in nineteen sixty-two through nineteen sixty-four, the club raised the funds that built a poolhouse and an auditorium on site, and eventually, in the seventies, gifted the land with all of these facilities in place to the City of London. Without the vision, the commitment to community building, and the ongoing efforts of the East Lyons Club, we would not have the land today that this community center is being built on. I think it's very important that we recognize the tradition and the hard work that the community has put into this land through the decades as the East Lyons Club. So I'm very proud to have moved the motion for this name at committee. Thank you, Your Worship, for your support, and Councilor Saleh for his. I know he's been engaging constituents as well. This is what the community has told us they want. So colleagues, I really, really encourage you to support this. I'm sure that you will, and I hope that as we continue to build new facilities in the City of London in many neighborhoods, I know Councilor Morgan is eager for a northwest community center to be built. I know Councilor Hillier is just chomping at the bit to hear if we get provincial funding to help with the southeast community center. Engage your constituents and listen to the stories and the history of the neighborhood when you think about how to name that. So I will just wrap up, if I could, through your worship, with a quick question to staff. Through you, the community continues, of course, to be eager to see the doors open, and they continue to be a little bit concerned with what they see as a lack of progress from the outside of the building. So I wonder if staff could comment on where we are today with the construction, particularly with winter coming and the need to get a parking lot in. And I know that there are temperature limits to which we can pour hot asphalt to do that. So through you to staff, if we could get a very brief update on our timeline?
Thank you. Mr. McCray, you gonna try that? Why not? Oh, Mr. Stanford.
Hello.
Even nicer.
Yes, the progress, we brought a report forward several weeks ago about the progress and the plans for the opening of the center. It's still planned for the mid-February, I believe, is when we have programming in the spectrum. As far as the asphalt goes, Mr. McCray can maybe help me with this, but I was in the roads area for a while. Plants are typically open until the first of December, so we do anticipate that there's plenty of time still for parking lot and site grading at that point in time. And the siding that you had questions on earlier is planned in the next couple of weeks. So they've repaired some of the siding that you would have seen, and they're scheduled for the next couple of weeks for the remainder of the siding. A more thorough update, I'd have to get more information as we have regular update meetings, so I'd have to get more information for a more thorough update.
Well, I'm sure glad Mr. Stafford answered that question. Seeing no one else on my, oh, you have a second, sure.
Sorry, just, I want to thank Mr. Stafford for that answer. Hope that the community, I certainly share that with them, and we look forward to that progress. You know, I've been fond of saying this has been nineteen years in the making, because that's how long I could track back from the Argyle Community Association that the push for this started. But it turns out, it's really been seventy years in the making, thanks to the East Lyons, and I think it's very appropriate that we honor them with this naming.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Helmer?
I just wanted to speak briefly to the income-related transit program. I want to echo what Councilor Squire said. I think he said very well in terms of the increase in ridership. I think it's also interesting, the survey results, seeing sort of how the program has benefited people, their own reported impacts in their lives. Obviously, a bit more money in your pocket because the transit is cheaper, but also helping them get to jobs, helping them keep the job. There's a category for it, "help you keep your job," and sure enough, there's fifteen percent of people saying, "it helped me keep my job." And I think when we look at the overall expenditure in this area, and the variety of ways that it's improving people's quality of life, I think this is a really important program. I know there's going to be lots of discussions in the budget about, you know, where should money be allocated, but I think the evaluation is showing us that this is, first of all, is making transit cheaper, which is helping people with affordability, but it's also having these other impacts in their life across all kinds of living situations. The majority of the respondents in the survey, anyway, seem to be relatively low-income, single folks who are older, and it's impacting those people in a major way. So I think it's a really good news story, and I just wanted to echo a lot of what Councilor Squire had said.
Thank you. Councilor Turner?
Thank you, Worship. I have a couple of questions. One with respect to the transit strategies here. And I certainly echo my And I certainly echo my colleagues' comments on this. But I wanted to go a little bit further. The survey itself was distributed to about 3,000 individuals who were made eligible for the income-related transit program. So there were a lot, I'd imagine through that, that means there are a lot of people who were not surveyed. That one of the challenges we discussed early on was the setting of the eligibility at LICO, the low-income cutoff. A lot of the feedback that we received after we made that policy change was that people were just marginally above the low-income cutoff and no longer eligible for subsidized transit, especially in the case of seniors. So my concern is that they weren't surveyed as part of this cohort, because the cohort is those who were eligible for it. If there, and the other part was if there was any kind of cross-tapping that was done with seniors who were eligible with the low-income cutoff. The other complaint that we heard a lot of was a question of of their access to, I guess, from a, lack of a better term, from a pride perspective, of now having to go into a government office and showing income and showing proof of status in order to receive this benefit, where before it was just by virtue of age. I think we made a good policy decision that age doesn't necessarily mean that there's a need or a necessity. But those who were accessing it were likely to have had the need and now might find themselves excluded from any benefit. So I think we tried to resolve some of that with the 25% reduction in tickets. But was there any exploration of seniors' interaction with these programs beyond just those that were eligible for LICO?
Through your worship, you'll notice that of the 191 respondents, approximately 27% were not eligible for the program. And the primary reason was because of their income level. And the majority of those were receiving CPP or OAS. So although it's a small percentage, we were able to look at the results from both those who were eligible and then the 27% who were not eligible and the rationale why.
Sorry, councillor Turner, I'd like to recognize Ms Smith's very first answer in her capacity. And I think that's very, very nice. So you have a secondary question?
Thank you, Your Worship. And thank you for the answer. So then, in that, I mean, it's all fairly linear. But was there any cross-tabulation to say, okay, seniors report these factors as more of a barrier than, say, those who are youth and identified these factors? Basically, through all those categories, to say, what are the impediments? And what are the parts that make it more accessible? In a lot of these cases, great examples said, yeah, it wasn't a problem for me. I was able to easily access transit and the low-income fares and all the schemes that we have here. But I wasn't sure if there might be differences within the cohorts.
Through your worship, the two main reasons. Number one, you're right, it was LICO after tax. Their income was slightly above that. And I think reinstating the seniors' subsidized bus ticket this year will assist with a portion of that. And then the second reason was the administration process and the application process. And we are currently looking at that now and how we can improve that. And you'll also see through the business case we bring through the multi-year budget some recommendations about streamlining all five programs.
Councillor?
Thank you very much. I am looking forward to that, because I think there's a lot of harmonization opportunities here. And I look forward to having the discussion about where that limit is set and how those five programs can start to work with each other rather than being five disparate programs. Second set of questions with respect to the core area informed response and rest in spaces update. I was just a little bit confused. I watched online to take a look at the discussion. There wasn't a lot. So there's some discrepancies in the report that I just wanted a bit of clarification on. Said April 1st to September 20th, 41 people were housed that were involved with the core area response. But then further in the report, it says between April 15th and August 15th, 22 people were housed. So that seems to indicate that between mid-August and mid-September, as many people were housed in that same month as were housed in the previous five months combined. Am I reading that appropriately? Like, did the program just really start kicking into gear in August? Or was there something that accounts for that?
Mr Datersbear?
Through the Chair, I think it's important for me to double-check that information and get back to you. But clearly, there has been a significant push to try to get people housed as quickly as possible. And that was part of the discussion at the caps committee, was about our interest and the feedback we get in this community and from you as council members about our desire to do that. But I'll double-check those numbers and get back to you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. As well, I think that's important, and it's great that it kind of identifies some of the challenges that those who are street-involved are living with, taking a look at mental health, addictions, chronic medical conditions. And it has reporting in each of those categories. I'd be interested to know what proportion don't have any risk factors at all associated within those three categories? Because people can multiple-report. They could have chronic health issues and mental health concerns. Or they could have addictions and mental health concerns, for example. So it doesn't paint the full picture to me, which I think might be helpful. One of the things that I hope is...
I'm sorry, was that a question you were directing to Ms Datersbear now?
No, it's just an identification of that, because I don't think it's something that can be answered right now. But from this report and where we move forward from here, one of the challenges that's identified when we start to talk about resting spaces is a question of what happens during the daytime? What happens when the shelters close and people need to leave the shelter before they come back for the evening? And some of the activity and the activation that occurs with their resting spaces speaks to some of that to some degree. I think it also speaks to those who are, have found themselves ineligible for entry into shelters due to behavioral concerns or substance use and things like that. This kind of identifies one of those chief frontiers of where the edges of efficacy are going to find themselves. Because if we're not, if they're having challenges being stable for shelter, the challenge for being stable for housing, permanent housing, is going to be just as present, if not more so. And so housing stability workers become very key in this discussion. So I'm interested in what our strategies are there on the going-forward part, because resting spaces, kind of at this point, seems like an interim point. But I didn't get a sense where we're going from this point forward. So if I might, through you?
Thank you, Ms Datersbear.
Thank you for the question through the Chair. You have pointed out the reality of some of the situations that we're dealing with right now, is that resting spaces is an opportunity for people to find a place to get something to drink, to have a lay-down during the day when the shelters are closed. We're looking at how we can expand on the resting places idea. Ultimately, our goal is housing. And so our focus is a multi-pronged approach to helping people in their moment of crisis. As and if they can access shelter services, that's an option for them. But ultimately, working with our housing stability workers to see what options exist for us for housing. The challenge in our community right now is housing and options for housing are limited. So over the next couple of weeks, you will see, and you'll have received information already, about a Housing Stability Week and the work that we're doing to support people who are experiencing homelessness or at the risk of becoming homeless. That's intended to get information out, not just to those who need it, but to those who can help us in this community, to offer us opportunities for housing in ways that we might not have been able to think that exist currently, other initiatives. Where we are having success is by putting supports around people, whether that's through London Cares or some other opportunities, where we are seeing that even just getting housing isn't enough. People need to be supported to stay in housing. And so that's the other things that we need to look at. And we'll be looking at that as part of the multi-year budget submission as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Actually, councillor, I've got to suggest you've been on the floor independent of questions responded to, 6 minutes 35. We didn't pull that item off separately. So that was an extended period of time. So it wasn't pulled off the consent item. So it's one period of time. And unless you have the supportive councillors to continue, which is your pleasure, then I have to...
Your Worship, I would ask, seek a small extension, if I might.
Is there someone to move that? Deputy Mayor Helmer, is there a seconder? Councillor Kayabaga? I will not have discussion on that. We'll just put that to the floor. But by the way, just to be helpful, next time would be useful. If people do wish to speak to separate items on the agenda, then you pull it off the consent agenda. We know that. But let's vote on this now.
With respect, Your Worship, you pull them off if you want to vote contrary to the item or if you want to change the motion that's on the floor.
Turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 12 to 2.
There you go. So we are at 6:35. I would suggest to our colleague, max 3 minutes 25 seconds.
Thank you, Worship. Imagine how much faster this would have been had we not done that. My question through you, Worship...
That'll be a separate discussion, we have colleagues, because it is 5 minutes, max, unless. And that's absolutely clear. So there's no misunderstanding about that. Please proceed.
Further, through you, Worship, if I might, to you, Ms Datersbear. The last question I had was just with respect to what's identified in here as part of the challenge of chronic medical conditions, mental health, and addictions issues. And in your last answer, you talked about doing wraparound supports as part of key to the program. Is there any initiatives or investigation of bolstering medical supports within the community, whether that's being in shelter itself, because that's where it's sought? I know London Intercommunity Health Centre is somewhat limited in the services it can provide because it is close to capacity.
Ms Datersbear?
Through your worship, thank you. So as you know, the coordinated informed response is a partnership amongst the city stakeholders, parks and rec roads, and our housing services, homeless prevention services area, and London Cares. And the primary supports to individuals is through London Cares. So where London Cares needs to access medical assistance for those individuals or those individuals are supported by agencies, they'd be connecting with LHC, or London Intercommunity Health Centre, other primary care providers. Obviously, our desire is to have people not engage in the medical system but access services in their communities. I think it's probably fair to say that we have a fair amount of work to do around continuing to engage our stakeholders in this community. And that inasmuch as we implement coordinated informed response from the city's perspective, we continue to work in partnership with our other colleagues and our stakeholders in the community who are involved in homeless prevention activities specifically. Having said that, resources are limited. I don't need to tell you that as council members. And that there's other stakeholders involved in this, too, including the provincial government, who is a funder as well. So we want to be clear about those realities, too.
Councillor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else on the speakers list, we have the report, with the exception of item 11, moved by councillor Cassidy. I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to 0.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the final item, which was a submission that the committee received from councillor Hopkins. And the committee's recommendation is that civic administration be requested to report back to the Community and Protective Services Committee with respect to potential regulatory options for short-term rentals, such as Airbnb. We also heard at committee that finance staff are currently and continue to be involved in looking at possible application of the municipal accommodation tax for these short-term rentals. So that's already ongoing. This is simply about regulatory options. So I will put item 11 on the floor.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. And I'd like to thank the committee, councillor Perloza, for moving the request to have staff come back to caps with a report on looking at regulatory options. We, for those who were not on council last time, we received a report a couple of years ago. And at that time, there wasn't too much of a concern. But since then, I'm starting to hear concerns in my community about these short-term accommodations, especially the ones that are not owner-occupied, the ones that rent out homes for parties, long, medium, short-term accommodations. And it changes our neighborhoods. It changes how they work, the noise, the safety aspects. And I think it's time to revisit and look at possible regulations. And I know other councillors have also experienced the same concerns. I want to add sort of another reason why I would like it to be looked at, because we are, housing looks different today. And I think it's something that we need to understand, if at all, to units that we may be losing with the short-term accommodations, having a better understanding what our market looks like. And so I'm hoping council will also support the requests back.
Any other comments or questions? So moved by councillor Cassidy, that would be you. Turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 13 with one recuse.
I noted that you sat down before the final vote, councillor Cassidy. I'm sure you were confident. Corporate Services Committee, councillor Morgan, please.
Thank you, Worship. I have a five-item committee agenda. I'm not aware of anybody who wants anything voted on separately, but I'd be open to hearing that. Okay, I know number four. I don't know of any others. If there are no others, I'd be happy to move 1 through 3 and 5 at the same time.
Any comments or questions?
I would just make a comment if other colleagues don't about 2.1, which is the City of London's credit rating. This is mentioned at committee, and I know that it's mentioned at council every time it happens. And the reason why I think it's worth mentioning each time it comes through is because it may seem routine, but it's not something that automatically happens. It is a long-term, multi-council, multi-treasurer discipline to what is a strong fiscal plan the city has that we adhere to each and every year. It relates to strong policies around surplus, the way that we handle debt, the way that we make investments. These are all things that lead into our AAA credit rating. And this credit rating actually saves us money at the end of the day. When other reports come through Corporate Services Committee on debt issuance, often we are told when we ask questions of the issuers, why did we get the rate we got? The credit rating is one of them. And that leads to lots of interest in our offers, which tend to be oversubscribed. And there's no problem filling them, and we get great interest rates because of it. So I didn't want to let it go by just letting it be routine. Certainly, it reflects the work of many, many people over a long period of time to have this maintained. And it is something that saves Londoners money.
Well said. Thank you. With that, we'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote on all items except item 4.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to 0.
Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, I'd be happy to put item 4 on the list, which councillor Turner waved at me that he wanted pulled.
Item 4, comments, questions? Councillor Turner?
Now, thank you, through your worship, perhaps to the Chair. Just with respect to the recommendation versus what was passed. So what was passed was the bylaw to put into place the distinguished Londoner category in the Mayor's New Year's Honors List. In the recommendation, it said that the civic administration be advised how municipal council wishes to proceed with proposed bylaw, talking a little bit about the implementation part. So I'm not sure what the conversation was. But perhaps through your worship, the Chair might be able to provide a bit more context.
Yes, basically, what the report said and what was articulated at the meeting is that if we wanted the status quo, we would just note and receive the report. If we wanted to move forward with...
back and discuss with the mayor to determine what the eligibility criteria and selection criteria would be? That's not, wasn't part of the discussion of the committee?
To the chair.
If it was, I'm not recollecting it at this moment in time, so I'd look to our staff to help me out if that's something that we touched on. Otherwise, we would proceed as outlined in the bylaw. We certainly discussed that procedure, that councillors would be able to bring forward names, that there would be similar processes to what we have. And certainly, there's some time for us to do that. But if there's a concern that needs to be raised, I would certainly raise it now, because that wasn't something that we got into any significant detail at the committee.
Thank you. So just in terms of comment, I'm going to vote against this, not because I'm opposed to the idea of the mayor being able to identify a Londoner, almost like the Order of Canada, Order of Ontario, something in the nature of the Order of London, or as we used to do keys to the city and things like that. I'm voting against it merely because I don't like the idea of combining it with the Mayor's New Year's Honors List. The Mayor's New Year's Honors List identifies a list of categories with people who've been recommended from stakeholder groups across the city. And I don't really support the idea of juxtaposing them with one person who shines above in all categories, across all categories. I think that is a separate honor, and I think it could be supported if it were in a separate circumstance, but I don't really like it in the context of having it amongst all the citizen appointees or citizen nominees in those categories. So for that reason, I'll vote against it. I'm not expecting huge debate on it, and I recognize what the mayor's intent is with this. As I said, I support the intent, just not where it lands.
Other questions or comments? Your worship. I absolutely got to stand. Sorry, not used to this. Certainly respect the councillor's comments with respect to this. The category's distinguished Londoner, there will be four individuals ultimately recognized, and those names will come forward through council members, as was part of the direction that was supported by the committee. So I hope that the committee will support this. From my view, it does not disrespect, nor is it ever intended to disrespect, the 10 categories so designated. But these are individuals who might not otherwise, or might well, potentially be part of a category, but irrespective, it gives councillors an opportunity to recognize some very distinguished individuals. Hence, we have four to be put forward by colleagues. If this passes, details, just some additional information will be presented to colleagues to remind them of the timeframes associated with that. And it's my hope that all colleagues participate. Thank you. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have a question for you. I've read the bylaw, see how it works with nominations coming from members of council. So when we get the nominations from the community, they go through an advisory committee and forward to the standing committee, to which that advisory committee reports. So when there is a group of nominees, will it come back to a committee or to council to advise who the nominees are? Will you yourself, Mr. Mayor, just make the decision on who the four will be? So I see, I understand the nominating process. I don't understand where it goes from there.
Not sure from a process if I can stand from here to respond, or do I need to move to another spot? I'll trade another spot to do this appropriately. Counselor Lehman, please. Your worship.
Thanks to answer the councillor's question, my intent quite clearly is that take it back through Corporate Services and ultimately final approval through this committee.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 13 to 1.
Thank you. Counsel Morgan? Thanks very much. Planning Environment, Counsel Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'd like to present the 17th report at the Planning and Environment Committee. I understand that there's number 12, 3.4, the application for 1339, 1347 Commissioners Road is being asked to be pulled. And there is a question for number eight. Other than that, I have received no other request.
Any other comments or anyone wish to do with anyone separately? Counselor Cassidy. I'm sorry, please.
Nothing pulled, your honor, your worship, just a comment.
Okay, we'll get to that point, and we'll recognize it at the appropriate time. Thank you, Counsel Hopkins. I'm not sure that there's any other items wish to be withdrawn, you wish to move that forward?
No, I'd like to present, to put forward the rest of the items. I would like to just make a few comments. The provincial policy statement review, I want to thank staff for their work on that. Lots of information and thorough review going forward to the provincial government. The other, there's a question on number eight, which is 2.6, Masonville Transit Village Secondary Plan. I know there's going to be a question asked of that. We had a couple of public participation meetings, and with that, I want to thank the committee for their support of 1339 and 1347 Commissioners Road. Oh, that one was pulled, so I'll talk to that later. So with that, I'd like to put a motion for the rest of the items.
Thank you. Counselor Cassidy, you wish to comment?
Yes, I just want to, through you, Mr. Mayor, I thank staff at committee. I want to say thanks again. This is a really important item for Ward 5 and also for Ward 7, because they're part of this as well. But the Cadillac Fairview Masonville Place site is a very important commercial site in the city, not just for Ward 5, but there, in the mall itself, there are over 2,000 jobs. So what's happening with staff bringing forward this secondary plan, we'll hopefully see more holistic approach, some guided development in the area, rather than seeing what the official plan would allow, which is in the Transit Village Place type, up to 22 stories. So in theory, you could see, you know, a number of applications, planning applications for 22-story buildings all around the area, with no kind of plan or logic as to where those particular, those higher buildings would be situated. So with the secondary plan, with staff working really, really well with the community, we're going to see some guided development there. And we sort of have, we also have a simultaneous planning application coming through from Cadillac Fairview for their specific site. And from what I've been able to see so far, it seems like they're working within the bounds of the secondary plan, even though it's not complete. Staff are still in the working phase, and we haven't yet even got a draft plan. So there has been some confusion in the community because of all the terminology in there. I think going forward, staff have indicated that they may stop using the term Transit Village and may just talk about this as the Masonville Area Secondary Plan, which makes sense, because in the past, we, the way our official plan was written, we wouldn't have called something as an R58 secondary plan, right? But with the new terminology, rather than saying things like R58, we say things like Transit Village. So it has been confusing for the community, and it's been all wrapped up with bus rapid transit and all of that sort of thing, even though it's not necessarily related to bus rapid transit. The fact that it is a very, very busy transit hub in the city is what determines the place type. So I want to commend the staff, through you, Mr. Mayor, for working so closely with the community. There has been, there have been a number of community engagement opportunities over the past many months, including walkabouts within the community, inviting members to come out and walk with city staff, identify things going on in the area, traffic considerations, building considerations, and trying to explain to the community how all of this is going to work together. So I'm happy to see this moving forward, and I'm happy to continue to work with staff and to see the additional opportunities for community engagement.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to touch on something that Counselor Cassidy raised. As we transitioned from that moment of intense BRT discussion, where we, as a council, determined the legs and portions of BRT that we were going to move ahead with, I think it's important when we transition from that point to implementation and building and then actually using the transit features that we agreed on, that we be crystal clear with the community on planning that that does go ahead in a city, as we plan for the future, and it's for many years down the road. So the Transit Village is a four Transit Villages. I always, and many others, associate that with BRT. It was a integral part of the BRT plan. So I think when people see, as Counselor Cassidy raised, planning for a Transit Village, there's probably questions that are going to be raised. So I would like to ask staff, why are we still talking about Transit Village when that northern leg was not approved by this council?
Mr. Fleming.
Thank you, your worship. And I think that Counselor Cassidy put it well, that the secondary plan is really an opportunity to coordinate development in a node. They're referred to as Transit Villages, and that helps to express that it's the integration of more intense development, the redevelopment of malls and plazas for mixed forms of development that's integrated with transit. We know that Masonville already has one of the largest hubs for transit in the city. It serves the entire north area, and whether it's rapid transit or conventional transit doesn't matter. And the bringing together of a more detailed plan for the development of this area, identifying the staging of heights, maximum heights, the ability to consider things like affordable housing, where public amenities, park spaces, civic spaces will go, and also understanding where, for example, that existing hub that we all know is on the corner of Richmond and Fanshawe, in the parking lot essentially of Masonville Mall, where that might be relocated to better integrate into development and actually open up development opportunity on that corner rather than surface parking. So those are the kinds of considerations, and whether it's rapid transit or conventional transit, the plan can move forward as it is.
Counselor Lehman. Thank you. Counselor Kaya Baga.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to apologize and pull item 2.3. That's the 185.
Counselor Kaya Baga, are you asking to pull the item? Because I understand, and I'll verify this with the clerk, that all items have been pulled. Can we go back and pull an item?
Clerk, what's your thought on that?
Through the chair, there's a motion on the floor that's been moved by the chair of the Planning and Environment Committee. The committee, or the council has not voted on it yet.
So if you're asking to have a pull, council has not voted on it yet, I would suggest you could make a comment, or we could go through and ask council if we need to pull it, but I would recommend that you just make comments to it.
Appreciate.
Counselor Kaya Baga.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, but I'd still like to pull this item, if that's okay with council.
So very much treating it like an amendment to have this pulled, and that would require a motion, because this is for, I think that would be the appropriate process. Counselor Salie, do you want to give us some wisdom here?
Sorry, I don't mean to make it complicated. All you have to do through the chair is just create a new motion with that one missing, with that one exempted from it, that's all.
I thought that's where we were thinking to take this. Sorry, Counsel Morgan.
Counsel Hopkins can just withdraw the motion she's put on the floor. There'd be no motion on the floor. She could put an alternate one if she was willing to do that. She's the chair of the committee. Nothing's been voted on.
Chair Hopkins, what do you think?
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion and put, and remove item number 12 and item number, number seven.
Seven, seven and 12. Any other comments with respect to items excluding seven and 12? Counsel Morgan, you are on the list.
Yes, I was on the list, not to say that. I wanted to talk about the Masonville Transit Village, which a few colleagues have commented on. I think it's important, as the other ward councillor in the area, to add to Counsel Cassidy's comments, which were excellent and right on the mark. I would say to colleagues like Counselor Lehman, I'm not surprised by his inquiries, because I would agree that there is a little bit of confusion about what to expect from the discussion on Transit Village. But let me tell you the situation as it stands today, because there are some significant developments that are happening already because of the existing conventional transit node there on both, in both wards, whether it's the seven-story intense development beside single-family homes on my side, or the one that we talked about quite a bit up on North Centre Road on Counselor Cassidy's side. This planning process will allow us to much better organize, in consultation with the committee, how that area is going to develop, where the height and density is going to be, and where the public amenities are going to be, exactly as Mr. Fleming said. So for me, irrespective of the decisions we made on rapid transit, this already is a transit node that is experiencing very intense development that the community has very strong opinions on, and having a overall plan that allows the committee to engage and properly plan this area with consultation is the appropriate thing to do, and I'm very supportive of this moving forward, and I think that is really what this is about. And this is the first of several that we're doing, so I think there'll be a lot to learn from this experience about the way that we articulate things, the names we use, that sort of stuff. I trust our planning staff has heard all of that feedback through this process and will move forward appropriately. So I certainly think it's a very positive thing for the area, because it will bring some guidance and control in conjunction with public consultation to the way that that is already developing and will continue to develop.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Homer.
Just wanted to speak to the building permit report. I know that's obviously a popular topic. Everyone's wanting to talk about it tonight, the building report. I just wanted to say, we're at 967 million in construction value at the end of August, which is very unusual, and I didn't want to let it just pass by without commenting. It used to be, not that long ago, that like the normal year would be something like 840 million for a whole year. Here we are only partly through the year, and we're already closing in on $1 billion in construction value. Now, a lot of it you can see in the report is one really big industrial development, the Mayberry Foods building. But just even if you back that out, we're still tracking for another very strong year in development. I asked the committee, and I'm going to bring it up tonight as well, so that colleagues are aware of this, we are tracking in terms of the different kinds of residential developments, we're tracking quite low to our targets. You know, we have targets in the growth management implementation strategy, we have targets in the DC bylaw, where we're trying to forecast what the split of units will be between single-family be and where the public amenities are going to be, exactly as Mr. Fleming said. So for me, irrespective of the decisions we made on rapid transit, this already is a transit node that is experiencing very intense development that the community has very strong opinions on and having a overall plan that allows the committee to engage and properly plan this area with consultation is the appropriate thing to do and I'm very supportive of this moving forward and I think that is really what this is about. And this is the first of several that we're doing, so I think there will be a lot to learn from this experience about the way that we articulate things, the names we use, that sort of stuff. I trust our planning staff has heard all of that feedback through this process and will move forward appropriately. So I certainly think it's a very positive thing for the area because it will bring some guidance and control in conjunction with public consultation to the way that that is already developing and will continue to develop.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Just wanted to speak to the building permit report. I know that's obviously a popular topic. Everyone's wanting to talk about it tonight, the building report. I just wanted to say we're at 967 million in construction value at the end of August, which is very unusual and I didn't want to let it just pass by without commenting. It used to be not that long ago that like the normal year would be something like 840 million for a whole year. Here we are only partway through the year and we're already closing in on a billion dollars in construction value. Now, a lot of it you can see in the report is one really big industrial development, the Makelewe Foods building. But just even if you back that out, we're still tracking for another very strong year in development. I asked the committee and I'm going to bring it up tonight as well so that colleagues are aware of this, we are tracking in terms of the different kinds of residential developments, we're tracking quite low to our targets. You know, we have targets in the growth management implementation strategy, we have targets in the DC bylaw where we're trying to forecast what the split of units will be between single-family, townhouses type of developments and apartments. And the single-family is way down. Again, when I say way down, I mean for the past six years, it's been off by double digits. One year it was up, three of those years it was down. In some cases, it's down like 23 percentage points, not 23%, but 23 percentage points. So the splits are very different and I'm concerned that the very first year of the DC bylaw, we're off by that much at this point in the year because we're pretty far into the construction season. Lots of stuff will still happen, maybe it'll be a bit different at the end of the year, but this is starting to become a bit of a pattern where the apartment units are much higher, the townhouses are pretty accurate and the single-family is low. And those pay different DC rates and it could cause a problem for us with the DC having enough money available to cover all of the growth-related works. So I want us to just keep an eye on that. I know we get these reports every year, every month, sorry, and it's something we need to keep an eye on because the first year of the DC bylaw should have been the one that was most accurate, I would think. You know, it's the one that's easiest to predict and it seems to be out again.
Thank you. So colleagues, Councilor Hopkins has moved her report with the exception of items two, three and three, four. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed 14 to zero.
Councilor Hopkins.
Yes, I'd like to put number seven, two point three, which is an application at 185 Queens Avenue parking lot. It's a redevelopment of a parking lot downtown. We had a really good discussion at, at planning and it, we're going out for an RFQ to find out who would like to develop these, this parking area as well as mixed uses. And I understand Councilor Kawabaga has pulled this and I'll go to Councilor Kawabaga.
Councilor Kawabaga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like my colleague here has said, we had a really great discussion at committee. I'm not part of the committee, but I came to specifically ask questions pertaining to the parking strategy that we've had downtown. And as I look at the resolution that the committee was able to come up with, I just thought there was a missing piece of some of the conversations that we had. It was my understanding that staff had said that they bring a report because we're working on a parking, sorry, a downtown parking report from 2017, from the previous council. And like I mentioned at the committee meeting was that we now have a new council which has set our, you know, an emergency, climate emergency in our city and in which the old report doesn't really reflect what this council has, what the direction that this council has decided to take. And it was my understanding at the meeting that they were willing to bring back a report, but the resolution here doesn't state that. It just states to receive and to move forward with looking for someone to, to develop this specific area, but there was no, there's, there's nothing indicated on some of the pieces that, you know, left me feeling more comfortable with where we're, the direction that we're taking in this, which were to bring back a report that will reflect where the direction that this council has taken and also to, to report on, on how, how we're going to be working or moving forward in terms of looking at parking downtown and different incentives that we were, we talked about at committees. That's why I pulled it is as I read, the resolution did not reflect the conversation that we had and I was just wondering if there is a motion that's needed to make sure that those components that were talked about at the meeting were included in this motion.
Chair, do you wish to respond?
Yes, I understand. This is an application for 185 Queens Avenue. We did have a very good conversation. I probably asked Mr. Fleming if he would like to speak to the parking strategy that we already have in place and also the climate change strategy that is to take place.
Ms. Fleming?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the report is very focused on an individual property where we're looking to send out a request for qualifications, request for proposals to see who is interested in developing a parcel that the city owns. And it is a site that currently has surface parking on it. As we explained at the committee, there's a lot of surface parking in our downtown and this is an opportunity to consolidate some of that, put it into a, a structure that is also within a mixed-use development that includes residential development, commercial development and perhaps at-grade retail. So that, that's the primary focus of this. There was a conversation as to how that might fit within the lens of climate emergency and I always think that's a good thing for council to ask in all of the work that they do. But in this case, we did identify that this is a positive type of development from that perspective and I could go in that in more detail if council wants to. But we also indicated that there is a report that's coming in response to council's climate emergency declaration. I indicated that I expected that in November. And with respect to the parking strategy, I would point out that this site is within that first priority, you could describe as center ice for the provision of additional parking. And council does have a policy in place in the London Plan that suggests that temporary surface parking lots should be reviewed and scrutinized each time they come up and turned down under a number of circumstances that we've identified by way of criteria in the policy. So bringing parking into a structure like this would allow for council to move forward on that policy and open up opportunity for development on those surface parking lots elsewhere in the core, which will improve the pedestrian, the quality pedestrian environment in the core.
Thank you. Councilor Kawabaga, any more comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and just like I said at committee, not being a member on the committee, I can't vote, so I can only make comments and make my way out. But I pulled it because for, for me to be comfortable with this proposal, I would like to see it paired with something that takes us forward, like a motion that actually mentions where we're going forward because this create, this is part of the prior policy on parking in the downtown, which is in, from the 2017 report. It doesn't, again, like I said, it doesn't reflect where we're at right now and I just wanted to make sure that we're adding that and we are writing it down as a motion. So I'm happy to add an amendment to this motion that staff brings back a report that reflects, we did talk about it, but there's no motion to, to actually put that in, in writing. And I did get a lot of communications from different people in my ward who are concerned that we have declared an emergency, climate emergency in our, in our city and we are moving forward to creating more parking spaces. And I'd also like to mention that I did, I did think it was a really great idea to move forward with this type of parking instead of having surface lots. And we had a really wholesome conversation around this, but I just wanted to make sure that, that the important pieces for me that would make me comfortable and the people I represent comfortable is making sure that we have that in writing, we keep that consistent to what we have, we have been doing as a new council here.
Although there's a speaker's list, I'm going to refer this back to the Chair for a moment, please.
Yes, I'm not sure if we can do this at this motion. It might have to be a separate item because this to me is about an application for Queen Street, for the level parking, for the mixed uses. I understand that we are going to be having a report coming back in November. Would it be possible, when we look at the climate change strategy, to look at, at a parking? I'm not sure if, if I can ask that question of Mr. Fleming, but what can we anticipate in this report coming back to us?
Mr. Fleming?
Well, Your Worship, at this point where we're at as a staff, this would be a higher order or higher level kind of conversation on the climate emergency declaration and giving some sense of what council could do immediately as well as a longer-term approach or strategy towards how council can address climate emergency. So we're certainly in your hands. If there's something specific you want us to come back and report on in that report, we could do so or you could take a look at the report and identify if there's a gap at that time and give us further direction then.
Chair?
I'm satisfied with that answer. I understand staff will be coming back with a climate change strategy report. We do have a strategy, parking strategy in place. This is a different application and I would suggest that maybe we should look at these reports and like Mr. Fleming said, if there's anything missing, then we could maybe put in a motion and to sort of look at the concerns that you have. That's my suggestion and...
Let's hear from Councilor Kawabaga then, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the information that staff has given and where you're taking this, but like I said, I think that parking is an important aspect of, of, you know, sustainability and dealing with climate emergencies and finding ways to address that. So this is responding to a report from 2017. I don't see why it's harmful for us to add a clause where staff would bring back a report and reflect what we're moving forward with this and basically give a better, give better information to the public as well on, on why we're moving towards this model and how this reflects where this council's direction has been going. So it, I'm not asking for, for something impossible, I'm just asking that we just add a clause that would ask staff to bring back a report for the direction on, you know, where we're going with parking now that we have a climate emergency declared in our city. So this is a specific parking ask on the direction of where council is going with this declared climate emergency.
So Councilor Kawabaga, last year, I mean, standing, I think Councilor Turner was looking to be helpful on, on something. Perhaps he wasn't, but I think he was. And so if you could help with this discussion, Councilor?
Your Worship, I often aim to be helpful. So if it, if it might be of assistance to the conversation, we have multiple plans and I think the way that, that this item had been reported out in the media made it sound like it was a standalone parking garage, which got a lot of attention from the community to say, wait a second, why are we building parking structures on its own when we were talking about climate emergency? The important part in all of this is how the parking strategy, how our move forward, the downtown master plan, how the London Plan and rapid transit all form together in this application itself. And all four of those have fairly significant climate applications. The, our move forward takes a look at all our underutilized surface parking lots and tries to figure out where, in combination with the, with the parking plan, to figure out where parking needs to be so that we can consolidate and discontinue the routine use of those, those park, surface parking lots, consolidate them to one place, put a building on top of it and improve the amount of people living within the core, increasing consolidation and densification of the city and decreasing the amount of sprawl that happens on the edge. Tie that into a site that's right on the rapid transit corridor, all of those come into play. So I think there's fairly, four fairly significant components of climate emergency with this and I don't think any of them are contrary to our declaration of them. I think staff will be coming forward with a comprehensive climate change recommendation of actions that the city can take and that would be the appropriate place to, but I think, see it as separate from, from what's being put forward here. I'm not sure an amendment to, to bring a standalone report talking about these components in, in our climate declaration is, I think it's probably better suited that we have the discussion in the, in the general actions that we might take in response to the climate emergency. I'm always loathe to, to add a report that might be redundant of something that's going to be explained in another piece of work and it ends up adding a lot of, a lot of staff time in order to prepare something for this, for our reports and committees.
So before we hear from Councilor Morgan, would that satisfy you, what you've heard thus far? Would you, do you wish to pursue further? Councilor Morgan, let's hear from you then.
So I concur with what Councilor Turner was saying. I'll tell you why I'm supportive of taking the direction that we're taking without really changing it is, one, Mr. Fleming has already articulated that we're going to receive a high-level report on what actions we could take with the climate emergency. We could figure out how we want to layer that into multiple processes. On this particular one, I do think this is supporting the environment and the climate. We're taking a surface-level parking lot. We're consolidating parking as Councilor Turner described. We're putting in increased density, potentially commercial and/or residential in this and that will allow us to potentially do a number of other things down the road, at least open options. It may, as we consolidate the parking spaces and stack them on top of each other, there's the potential for us to not renew some of the other permits or at least have the capacity to not renew some of the temporary parking permits for single-level surface parking out there. Developing and intensifying population density allows more people to live together, utilize fewer city services, which can all, instead of building a whole bunch of services out in my ward, we can utilize the existing capacity and services to allow people to live in a place that is much more environmentally efficient and economically efficient in, in the core. Through bonusing and other provisions on this site, we could even have a green roof or something attached to it. All of those things are possible with this particular development as it's currently articulated and I am concerned about us potentially sending signals that this is not something that aligns with multiple plans and is not something that is potentially very beneficial for the environment in this city. Because that, that's the way that I've seen it and that's certainly why I'm supporting it and I, I wouldn't want to delay it and I wouldn't want to, to mix in other discussions because I think it stands alone on its own merits at this point. And I think there's very legitimate things that Councilor Kawabaga is raising that, that could certainly be well debated when Mr. Fleming's report comes forward on, on the climate emergency motion.
Colleagues, I've allowed a certain amount of discussion, knowing there isn't really a proper amendment that has been discussed nor a second or to it. So I think what I need to do, if we're going to prolong this discussion, is we need to have a specific amendment that we can look to and, and determine if there is a second or to that. So Councilor Kawabaga, I will look to you for a very specific amendment reference and see if you have a second or for that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I propose an amendment, I'd just like to say that we're, we're saying the exact same thing. We're all waiting for, for a report from staff and all I'm asking is that we put that in writing. I don't see, they're going to be doing the exact same work. They are, they said at committee that they were going to be bringing a report and if that makes a lot of people feel, feel comfortable to know that staff has committed to bring a report and we know that it's in writing, I don't see why that's very complicated to do because at the end of the day, we're still waiting for a report to come back.
I'm looking for an amendment, please, or not, but we've got to abridge this discussion so we have some focus on it. Is there an amendment there, Councilor?
I'd like to add an amendment that staff brings back this report on parking, on the parking strategy that relates to the direction of this council with the declared climate emergency in the city.
Let's see if we can get that in writing, but let's just see, is there a second or for that? Not, I'm sorry, is there a second or? I'm sorry, I didn't see it. We'll look for the motion. Colleagues, there is a motion on the screen. Let's see if that, Councilor Kawabaga will ask you to take a look at that here. Could you read that, that force and, Councilor, my screen is a little more modest than some?
Through the chair because the public display is being cut off a little bit. If you refresh your screens, you should be able to read it, but it's an amendment to clause two point three to add a new Part C that would read as follows, "The civic administration be directed to report back in relation to updating the existing parking strategy with specific reference to this council's declaration of a climate emergency."
Was that your, was that your amendment then, Councilor? Is there a second or for that? Seeing none. Thank you, Councilor Kawabaga. Now I will turn back to the Chair, but I do have a speaker's list. I think we're fine for that. Let me, Councilor Cassidy, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I appreciate where Councilor Kawabaga is coming from. I'm looking forward to staff reporting back in the future about the, the climate emergency declaration.
looking forward to staff reporting back in the future about the climate emergency declaration. However, we know that currently, right now, the surface parking lot issue and the issue of rolling three-year exemptions for surface parking lots in downtown that are supposed to not be allowed, this is an issue that we need to address right now. And we often hear from people in the community that say, well, the city as an entity is being a hypocrite because we're trying to eliminate surface parking lots downtown, and yet the city runs some surface parking lots. So I am appreciative of staff bringing this report to committee. It allows us to put our money where our mouths are, and it allows us to show leadership here. The incentives that exist as far as building specifically residential developments downtown hopefully will lead to the proposals coming forward for this particular site being more likely to be residential. We want to see more residential units built downtown, more of these kind of high-density residential buildings. The possibility for a mixed-use building is quite large as well. And then to incorporate the parking under the building, hopefully underground as much as possible, and replacing 75 spots with a greater number of spots. As councillors have already said, Councilor Morgan very articulately articulated very clearly the possibility, the very real possibility of eliminating other surface parking lots by, through the development of this site and others, and other sites downtown. We're also proving that the market does exist. We've heard from landowners in the past that they don't want to develop their surface parking lots into residential units or other kinds of developments because there's no market right now downtown to develop. Now, we have a number of developers that are proving that argument wrong, because we have quite a number of buildings that have been approved downtown, and we're seeing a lot of these buildings going up currently and imminently. I'm very supportive of this. The downtown parking strategy is really not that old. We have a lot of strategies, our transportation master plan, a lot of different plans in place that have been in place for a number of years, and I'm looking forward to seeing some updates on some of those plans. But I think the downtown parking strategy is something that has never been done before. It's something that's still fairly new, and I think it's very innovative in the approach that staff has taken by parcelling out the sections of downtown to show where utilization is high and where utilization is low, to show where we have a high number of parking spaces available and not necessarily being used. And then areas like this site, 185 Queens, where there's a demand for parking and not necessarily a lot of parking available in the immediate area. So I like this approach. Through you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to staff for bringing this kind of innovation to us, and I'm looking forward to seeing a lot more of this kind of thing for our downtown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
Just very briefly, I want to say to Councilor Kayabaga, I think I look forward to bringing something to committee related to some of the things that you were bringing up. I think I didn't want to support the idea of tacking it on to this particular development. I just think it's confusing, the issue. I think there's a lot of things we need to talk about when it comes to parking, and not just downtown. I think at Planning Committee, we've been seeing a lot of friction around how much service parking is required, the parking minimums in different areas, and I think we need to be looking at what is the expectation for service parking, and do we really need to be requiring so much land for all kinds of developments in all parts of the city to be set aside only for surface parking? And I think in the Southwest, for example, we try to encourage underground parking. I think that's a much better use of land. And I think if we're going to achieve the goals of intensification that we set on the London Plan and even exceed them, we're going to have to look at this issue of parking. And I think where it's going to come up is in the zoning bylaw review, right, is how are we going to do zoning bylaw, when we do rethink zoning, what are going to be the requirements around parking, how many areas should there be, should there be different standards? And I think it's a really important discussion. In terms of this particular proposal, I think it's a good one. If a developer came forward with a private piece of property, they wanted to build a tall tower with mixed use on it downtown, we'd be delighted to see that happening, right? That's the kind of thing we're trying to encourage downtown. And this is a service parking lot that we own as a city, and we're going out to the market essentially to see if someone wants to do that. And I think if they can come forward with a good proposal, and we can integrate parking underground and inside the building, that's going to be far superior to what is there now, which is the surface parking lot. I think it's a great location for it. And I would say about the parking strategy generally, I mean, anything can be improved, but I think the overall strategy is shifting the parking, right? So better kinds of parking, underground and structured parking, I think it's better parking than service parking. Certainly in the winter, it's a lot better. And I think that's the kind of parking we need to have downtown. I think the question of how much parking there should be and where it should be located, that's the kind of stuff we need to be dealing with in the parking strategy, and I think regular updates to that are important. So I think the councillor's on the right track. If she wants to bring a letter to a planning committee about parking generally, I think we could have a good discussion about it at committee. I just didn't think now was the right time for that.
Councilor Lewis.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll be brief. I agree with a lot of what Councilor Cassidy and Deputy Mayor Helmer have just said. Location does matter. There is a need for more parking in parts of the downtown while other parts, it's certainly underutilized. I would argue that this is an area that needs intensification of parking. We want to see those empty storefronts on Dundas Street filled up. In order to do that, there is going to be a need for some employee parking. As much as we may wish and as much as we may make efforts to increase transit ridership, colleagues, the car is not going away. It may become autonomous. I hope many, many more of them become electric very quickly, but it's not going away. And it will still be, and yes, Councilor Morgan, I noted your smile there on your electric vehicle serves you quite well. I hope more of us can move that way. But we are going to need parking spaces, and surface parking, at the end of the day, is a bad use of land. If we can stack those parking spaces and free up land for other developments, be they residential, commercial, even be they parkland and green space, that's a better use than a block covered with asphalt for vehicles to be parked on. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I certainly support it, and I hope that we will see a good proposal come forward for a mixed-use development here that will enhance not just the use of this site, but will enhance the use of the downtown, because we do need parking spaces where people can park for eight or 10 hours while they're at work, and then perhaps go out and enjoy a bite to eat before they go home. We want that to be accommodated, as well as that two-hour parking window that customers may need to visit a business. So I think this is a good development all around, and I hope that the public spaces that are available when we get the proposals brought forward do include both long-term and short-term parking.
Thank you. Chair, do you wish to do a wrap on this?
Yes, if you allow me, your worship, and I want to thank Councilor Kayabaga for her advocacy on getting rid of surface parking downtown. I know that's been a conversation the past couple of years with the previous council, and we really do need to look at surface parking. I know as a councillor in the Southwest, there was an application for 999 surface parking spots, and I know not only the downtown, but looking throughout the city, how we can look at parking and do we need so much of it. So I am looking forward to staff's report back as well with the climate change strategy, and also Councilor Kayabaga, looking forward to you coming back to planning as well with a motion to look at parking as it relates to downtown. Regarding this application, this is quite a unique application. We are going to be going out to RFQ, having flexibility in the application to allow developers to bring in their proposals for mixed-use development as well as parking. And also, there are timelines too with this application that have to be received and dates confirmed. So I think that's very important, too. It's not just putting in an application and then just waiting. There is a commitment there that this should be built sooner than later.
Colleagues, with that, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to 0.
Chair, before I turn this back over to you, colleagues, I'm very mindful of the time, noting that we have one item still left with the planning environment. We have the SPPC report, we have the enclosed session report, and then ultimately bylaws. So I'm at your pleasure, colleagues. I know often we put this to a vote whether we want to carry forward. Oh, Chair, yes, please. Councilor Robbins.
Your worship, if I can make a suggestion, I know how important it is for certain councillors here to take their dinner break. I know it is on the agenda for 6:30. There are people here in the gallery as well. So this is the last item, number 12, and if I could make that suggestion that we follow through with the agenda.
Unless I hear a strong objection, otherwise I'm getting some nods that, yes, let's do that. Councilor Lewis, do you have an opinion on this?
I do, your worship, and I'm going to be consistent. We are scheduled for a break at 6:30. I would encourage us to stick to our agenda. We did this at the last meeting with respect to the folks in the gallery. Folks from Ward 5 who waited to hear an item from a planning committee report had to wait for our dinner break. I think we should be consistent and stick with our agenda.
Okay, we'll, in just a moment, we'll put a vote to that, but I'll hear from Councilor Squire.
I haven't said anything when this has happened for the last few nights. I mean, there's a huge benefit, quite frankly, to finish a short agenda when it's there. I really worry about going, if this council would agree, we're going to go out and eat quickly, make it 15 minutes or 20 minutes and come back. What happens is it's in excess of an hour, we're coming back to do items, probably staff wants to go home. Quite frankly, if I've got another 15 or 20 minutes to go, I'd like to go home. And, you know, I think to sit here and say, well, I'm going to always insist that it's 6:30 and we're going to break to have dinner, I still think we have to give mine to what we have to finish. So I think we should finish everything tonight, whether that's the vote or not, but I haven't spoken on it before. My wife told me just not to say anything tonight. I've broken that promise, so maybe I shouldn't get home as early as I want.
Well, maybe not, but I'll tell you what, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion that we, let's just say we've got something to decide upon, that we move to complete the meeting. Is there a mover to that effect? Moved by Councilor Squire, seconded by Councilor Cassidy. Let's not have any more discussion. Yes or no, folks? Can we do that, unless you really feel obliged to comment? Pardon me? Entire meeting. That was the motion.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 9 to 5.
Councilor Robbins.
Yes, your worship, I'd like to put number 12, 3.4. It's an application at 1339, 1347 Commissioners Road West. It is for a five-story, 34-unit apartment building. We had quite a discussion. The public participation meeting was held. There were a number of added. One in particular was an H5, which was a holding provision to allow the public to make comments at a public participation meeting through the site plan process. There was also a couple added to C. You could see I. There are a number of concerns that the public did express. And this is an application, there's underground parking, and there's also three units for affordable housing as well, which is all good. It's all about development. The development was supported by the committee. C, I to 5 were items that were put in, given the concerns from the public. I being the first one, the analysis of managing lighting impacts. This is a development that backs onto a condominium complex to the north. It's very close to a number of residents. A noise study, too, should be looked at, as well as enhanced provisions of boundary landscaping along the east and the north property boundaries. Number four that was added, and number five, the protection and preservation of trees along the northerly boundary, both shared and within the boundary vegetation of the subject property, with the exception of invasive species or hazardous trees. It's very important. This is Byron. We're known for our trees in Byron, and there are a number of trees, not only on the applicant's property, but also on the condominium complex property. They're very close to the border there, and they should be looked at. There will be a tree preservation plan through the site plan process. And number five, if any trees are coming down, that privacy trees be used for replacement trees.
So you're moving this, Chair?
Yes, it was supported by the planning committee and happy to do so.
Comments or questions? Councilor Ann Meierberg.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very good application. As has been mentioned, the underground parking is certainly a very good feature. Three affordable housing units as part of this development, also very good. Medium density, 34 units, right on the major arterial. So it's plus, plus, plus. There's no doubt. However, my constituent, who happens to be the builder, contacted me. We had a discussion. I also spoke with their consultant, who also sent all members of council a note on Friday by email outlining their concern. Their concern primarily is under C, small roman numeral IV, 4. They feel that they will be ultimately boxed in to a situation where, with the current wording, if they tear down or damage a tree, it could stymie their construction of the underground parking. They're being very upfront about it. The underground parking is going to necessitate most, if not all of these trees, perhaps being removed, but they are committed to saving where possible as many as they can. They've also committed to overplanting in the sense that they'll plant more trees, shrubs, et cetera, appropriately than are required. So they want to be very responsible, but they're looking for balance. They don't want to get into a situation where because of the wording that they're stuck with not being able to build the underground parking because of the requirement to save all the trees, as is currently written. So I'm proposing, and I will move, that at the start of small roman numeral 4, we simply insert two words, where possible, the protection and preservation of trees along the northerly boundary. So we just insert where possible. So I will move that. Again, this is an excellent development. I don't think we want to throw the baby out with the bathwater inadvertently by just using the wrong language in the motion. So I'm simply proposing and moving a very concise, simple amendment.
So acknowledged. Is there a second? Councilor Lewis, on the amendment, comments or questions? We have a few. Councilor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. I will just rise and say I'm willing to second this and support it because I think, I mean, we just had a very fulsome discussion about how we don't want surface parking, we want stacked parking. This development is proposing underground parking. We received, we all received the email from the developer on Friday suggesting that it's simply not likely to be possible to build underground parking and preserve every tree on that one side. If they're willing to preserve where possible, that's great. I accept that, but I think it's very important that we recognize underground parking is going to mean disrupting vegetative growth where that parking has to be dug. And if that's, the developers indicated that they're more than happy to exceed the minimum requirements on replanting. So I'm perfectly fine with where possible, because I, too, would prefer to see a development that has an underground parking garage than a development with expanded surface parking for vehicles.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
The language that the councillor is proposing to amend is advice to the approval authority for their consideration, and I wonder if perhaps our staff could respond as to how they would interpret advice to the approval authority to consider protection and preservation of trees along the northern boundary. That's the crux of the issue here, and I think we should hear from our staff about how they're going to interpret that, because it's not a staff about how they're going to interpret that, because it's not a direction, it's advice to the approval authority to consider.
Let's hear from staff. Ms. Jones.
Through your worship, the councillor is correct. It is advice to the approval authority. It'd be interpreted as allowing conversation to continue. So at the zoning phase, even though it's a bonus zone, we're still at a fairly high level. We continue to work our way down through the site plan process. We'll continue to have a conversation about tree preservation and impacts through the site plan process with the proponent at that time.
Deputy Mayor?
I think the amendment is not necessary, and I'm going to vote against it.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with the deputy mayor. I, I also believe that the amendment is not necessary, and this is, this is an application that's caused, as, as many of these infill applications do, has caused consternation in the community, in the neighboring, in the neighboring properties that are adjacent to this, these properties. These are actually three properties that a developer has put an option to buy in order to consolidate three properties where single-family homes now sit, to build something larger. And in order to build something as large as possible, the developer is, needs to get rid of all the trees. So what the developer, we heard at planning committee, is proposing to replace these mature trees that now sit on the property are pots or planters with shrubs and, and other kinds of plants growing out of them. They will not replace the mature trees that now sit on the property. So the, the community is already being asked to compromise. I think we need to let our approval authority know that we are trying to support the community as much as possible, knowing that the rezoning went through committee and will most likely be approved tonight. When we do these infill developments, when we approve them, we try, the, the, our, our bylaw, our, our zoning bylaw, the official plan, the provincial policy statement, the provincial planning act, they all say the same thing, that we should mitigate the impacts as much as possible that these infill developments have on existing neighborhoods. We should try to lessen the impact, and the, the best way to lessen this impact is to keep and preserve as many of the existing trees as possible. Right now, these trees provide some buffering between the neighbors. We should not approve a large, huge development and also give the blessing to eliminate all of the trees.
Thank you. Chair, you have some comments.
Your worship, if you would allow me to wrap up then?
Well, I would think the person making the amendment would do the wrap on that, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and depending on the status, that'd come back to you if that's acceptable, unless you want to comment on the amendment. Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on the amendment, and I appreciate councillor Lewis's concerns about underground parking and the importance of underground parking. Underground parking will happen on this site. It will regardless, and preserving the trees to the north, the privacy barrier that exists there is very important to the community. We just heard from staff that the, this amendment is not required for the approval authority to go forward with the tree preservation bylaw, so I will not be supporting it.
Do you have a wrap for that, Councillor Van Meerebergen?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this, this isn't a huge development. We're looking at a 34-unit, medium density, by all accounts, well-planned use of this land. Again, with the focus on the underground parking, everyone on this council seems to value underground parking. So it, it makes sense that the, the builder wants to make sure that when he gets going, he's not going to be stuck in some kind of regulatory conundrum because of wording that was put into the motion where ostensibly trees are not to be damaged or, or removed or taken down. So he's committed, and we all know this, he's committed to planting along the boundaries. He, he's committed to, to making that property so that there's protection between the neighbors and the development. He's committed to putting up proper fencing. So we've heard the words that, you know, this isn't necessary. Well, what does it hurt then if we put where possible at the beginning as a very small amendment? So I'll continue to move this, and I thank the secondary for this, and I would ask that you vote in favor.
Colleagues, we're voting on the amendment. We turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, six to eight.
Councillor Morgan, pardon me, Councillor Hopkins, please.
I'd like to put the item number 12 on the floor.
Comments, questions? Councillor Van Meerebergen.
Thank you, Mayor. If you could call C, small roman numeral IV separately?
Any other comments or questions? Then let's turn your attention to the screen as we vote on 3.4, exempting C4.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to zero.
Councillor Hopkins.
I'll be putting item number four then, C4.
Thank you. I'd entertain discussion, but only to the extent if I can, colleagues, of items that have not been already discussed. Comments or questions? Thank you for your indulgence. I'll turn your attention to the screen.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 11 to three.
That's my report.
Thank you very much. SPPC, Deputy Mayor Helmer.
I'm not aware of anything that needs to be polled.
Anything colleagues wish to have polled?
Except for the Fanshawe one with, I think, Councillor Meerebergen. Yeah, so let's put everything else.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to zero.
Deputy Mayor?
I'll put the remaining item on the floor. This is the Fanshawe College Innovation Capital Grants application, which we received.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll turn your attention to the screen as we vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 13, with one recused.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Helmer. Colleagues, under added reports prior to the presentation of the report in council in closed session, I'd like to call upon our city manager, Martin Hayward, invite the city manager to have the floor for some comments. Mr. Hayward.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I've had an amazing journey here at the City of London, and I wanted to formally announce that I confirm my intent to retire in January 2020 this year. I just, again, want to publicly thank council for your confidence in me, for your support of me. I also want to thank the senior leadership team here, they're a phenomenal group, as you well know, and help lead the city really well in conjunction with you. Also, all the employees at the City of London, you know, I've had the opportunity to go around and see a number of work sites and, and visit with them and, and even speak with the union reps and union presidents. We have a phenomenal working relationship together, and they all do a top-notch job in this city and for the city, and so my appreciation goes to them as well for working with me. But that's short and sweet, and thank you again for your support of me.
Why do I sense right now Liz is doing the happy dance? I don't know. It's, uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hayward. There will be appropriate opportunities for us to respond in kind. It will not be tonight unless privately, but thank you very much for your thoughtful comments, and obviously from all of us, for all that you have done for us over so many years. More to come. Councillor Hillier, if you would be so kind as to present the 18th Report of Council in Closed Session, I know you'll do your very best.
Well, I apologize in advance, I haven't taken Mo's speed reading class, so. 18th Report of Council in Closed Session. Your Council in Closed Session reports, one, offer to purchase industrial lands at UniFirst Canada Limited, part of Block One Plan 33M-544, Innovation Park Phase One. That as a procedural matter pursuant to section 239, paragraph six of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the managing director, corporate services, and city treasurer, chief financial officer, and on the advice of the manager of Realty Services with respect to the city-owned industrial land located at the west side of Venture Gate and Innovation Park Phase One containing an area of approximately nine and three hundredths acres, more or less subject to survey, being comprised of part Block One Plan 33M-544 as outlined location map, the offer submitted by UniFirst Canada Limited, the purchaser, to purchase the subject property from the city at a purchase price of $632,100, reflecting a sale price of $70,000 per acre, be accepted subject to the following conditions. Two, Uni4 tentative agreement. As a procedural matter pursuant to section 239, paragraph six of the Municipal Act 2001, the following recommendation be forwarded to council in closed session for the purpose of considering whether the recommendation should be forwarded to city council for deliberation and a vote in public session. That on the recommendation of the acting director, human resources, the memorandum of agreement and agreed to items dated September 11, 2019, concerning 2019 to 2022 collective agreement for the Uni4 Local 302, representing full-time and part-time service workers of Adurnis Home, be ratified. Thus closes.
Is there a secondary? Councillor Cassidy, comments, questions? Scintillating, by the way. I want you to say it, please. The colleagues will turn your attention to the screen as we vote. Thank you, Councillor Hillier. There are no deferred matters. I'm not aware of any inquiries nor emergent motions. unless there are any, any bills that anyone wishes to pull, I'm respectful. Councillor Turner, you spoke to one issue. Okay, then if that is the case, then I am prepared to look for a mover for bills 392 through 401 and added bill 402. All that inclusive is the mover. Councillor Lehman is our secondary. Councillor Morgan, call the vote. Thank you, colleagues. With respect to second reading of bills 392 through 401 inclusive with, and added 402, I will look for a mover. Councillor Hopkins, secondary. Councillor Cassidy, any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Thank you, colleagues. With respect to third reading and enactment of bills numbers 392 through 401 inclusive and added bill number 402, I will look for a mover. Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Hopkins. I call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion's passed, 14 to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. We will do this by hand vote. I will look for a mover to adjourn. Councillor Morgan, seconded by Councillor Squire. All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. 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 Thank you.